Good evening and welcome. On behalf of the Glendora City Council, I welcome you here tonight. Achievements are those things that are precious and timeless, so we are very fortunate to have this opportunity, once a quarter, to come together and celebrate the achievements in the community. These give us the opportunity to give recognition to individuals, to organizations, that have contributed to our community in extraordinary ways, and also to have an opportunity to say thank you to our servicemen and women who have returned from duty. Joining me here tonight are my colleagues from the city council. We have Mayor Pro Tim Jean Mirabito, Councilmember Mendel Thompson, Councilmember Gary Boyer, and Councilmember Judy Nelson. So, thank you for joining us tonight as we take this opportunity to celebrate these fantastic achievements. We will be starting tonight with our Community Beautification Awards. The Community Appreciation Awards are chosen by members of the Beautification Nomination Panel to recognize outstanding residential and commercial properties in the areas of landscaping, renovation, and overall appearance. Panel members are asked to submit nominations for properties which they believe fit the criteria of being well-maintained and demonstrating pride in their neighborhoods. Residents can also submit nominations of their neighbors whom they believe have made impressive improvements to their properties. And tonight, we have some of the Beautification Committee with us, and so I'd like to invite them forward and introduce them to you. We have with us Matthew Bartlett, Daniel Collins, and Anita Gilfillan. Two of the committee members who worked with them in making these selections who are not able to be with us tonight, Joe Batagli and Jack Evanella. So, again, thank you for all your hard work. We will read off the names of the various residents and properties that have received this award, invite you to come forward if you'd like to share a word or two about your property and the labor of love that went into transforming it. We invite you to do that. We have one of the beautiful signs that you can place in your yard that Vanna White, also known as Mendel Thompson, will show for you right now. Thank you, Mr. Boyer. And we also have a certificate for you. So, right now, we invite you to enjoy the PowerPoint presentation that will show you photos of these properties. Our first recipient is the Stump residence on Danhurst Avenue.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Would you like to...
Thank you very much for this. We've been part of this community for almost 42 years. In October, same house, believe it or not. We bought it, you know, brand-new, and we've loved it, I mean, from day one. It's been an unbelievable home, and Glendora is just amazing. Thank God, we've been a part of this community for almost 42 years. Thank you so much.
When it comes to all things beautification, I go with the wife. She always tells me what to do. And so, I thought, when we got nominated for this, I thought, oh, man, I've got it covered, I can relax now. The next day, she comes back and says, "By the way, the gates need painting, and they look so bad. We need new gates." So, we gotta put up new gates now. Anyway, it's worth it, you know? Anyway, thank you.
Next, we have the Viatoro residence.
Hi, there. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything about your purpose? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Beautiful.
Want to say anything?
Yes, I'd just like to say, you know, we've been here almost three years. To get this award is actually very privileged. When we drove around here, we saw a lot of beautiful homes, and for us to be considered for this is a privilege, and we take a lot of pride in it. And hopefully, we can continue to maintain it for the many years that we plan to be here. Thank you.
Congratulations. Your son? Next, we have the residence on Briergate Lane. Okay, they must not have been able to make it tonight. The Vasquez residence on Armstead. The Diaz residence on Delay Street. Liam.
Thank you. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything about your house?
Well, uh... Thank you so much.
Low pressure. Yeah.
Yes. We've been in Glendora for 35 years, and, well, we're just very happy to be in Glendora and happy for having our house chosen for this award.
And was anyone here from the Old Home residence? Okay, the Gaunt residence on South Glendora Avenue?
Actually, this is a community called Parkside, and there are 37 units there, and I'm the one that nominated it because I have seen so much work and dedication on the part of the five board members, of which I'm one. And we work very, very hard to keep the best-kept secret in Glendora, I call it. It's a lovely, lovely community, and I'm very proud to live there. Thank you for this honor.
You have demonstrated that there's strength in numbers, and as you work together as a community, you can accomplish great things. Thank you. The Gordon residence on Pennsylvania Avenue?
Hi, congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I don't know if you can tell, that's fake grass. I just got a little tired of the Governor Brown things coming down, and I thought, oh, so, anyway, that's artificial turf there.
The Lou Mary residence on Comgrove Avenue? The Hoffler residence on Norgate Street?
Would you like to? You don't have to.
You can say.
Thank you.
The Lucy residence on Timber Lane?
Basically, it looks the way it does because she cracks down quite a bit. No, all kidding aside, you know, we just take good pride in it. You know, it's important to us for it to look good and to stay sharp, so we appreciate this award. Thank you.
The Pearson residence on Wabash?
Thank you very much for this award. I'm shocked. When they came to our door, my husband and I went, "What? Our house? We see so many beautiful homes." My husband's the one that's in charge of it, but he's not here with me. Off to the left is a little desert that he promised me wasn't going to get any bigger than this, each of the cactus, and they're huge, and we have these big desert trees over there as well, so he's really proud of his desert. Thank you.
And the Brown residence on Glencroft Road? Well, again, we'd like to congratulate everyone, and thank you for your pride of ownership and all of the time and effort that you put into caring for your property. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Next, we will be recognizing those who have been a part of our Adopt a Park program. The Glendora Adopt a Park program is designed to promote civic pride and offers individuals, groups, and businesses a chance to directly contribute with a hands-on approach to keep our parks and our trails clean. The program also provides an opportunity for residents to donate a memorial tree, a park, or bench, or other park amenities in memory of someone, that they can also have this opportunity to beautify the green space by making those purchases. Tree donors can choose a tree from a list and work with the Community Services Department on a location for the tree to be planted. The individuals and groups that we will be recognizing tonight have donated their time and resources as part of our Adopt a Park program, and you'll be able to see some of those contributions as well in the slideshow that will be accompanying this. We will begin with recognizing Girl Scout Troop 16234. What that troop did, they donated plant material, planted flowers, and spread mulch in a barren planter areas at the South Hills Dog Park to beautify the park and increase the health of the plants. So, we appreciate their time and effort and what they did in trying to accomplish that. Next, we will be recognizing many of our Eagle Scouts who have chosen to work with our Parks Program for their projects. The following Boy Scouts have chosen to sign up with the Adopt a Park program. The projects entail a lot of planning, putting together a team of scouts, a lot of hard work, and of course, physical labor. Under the careful guidance and supervision of the Community Service Department and two members of the Trails Council, I'm going to have them stand up right now, Gordon Rowley and Dick Sweeney. These two gentlemen are the face, the hands, the feet, the vision, and the backbone of our Trails Department in trying to work with scouts, trying to be the eyes and ears out there. I know Mr. Sweeney's out there, walking those trails and knows when things are awry, and so we appreciate you coordinating all of those many efforts, but especially working with the scouts on these projects. Tonight, James Bonando, Boy Scout Troop 491, Project Colter Pine Trail. James' Eagle project was to install two gabion baskets on the Colter Pine Trail. He and his team also cleared the Dunn Canyon Trail and a section of Colter Pine Trail of bush and grass, making a safe and clear path for the hikers. So, James? Next recipient, Andrew Blunt, Boy Scout Troop 491. Donated lumber to repair and paint 29 benches at Finkbeiner Park, providing safe and clean benches at the park for all to enjoy. And these projects, not only their time and labor, but it's a tremendous effort, I know, in trying to coordinate all the volunteers they need to make it happen, so thank you, gentlemen. Next, Nicholas Castro, Boy Scout Troop 491. Obtained donated plants from nurseries to restore the slope areas at Louis Pompey Memorial Park. He removed dead plant material that had been trampled on and planted new material to prevent erosion on the slopes and landscaped areas. Daniel Garcia, Boy Scout Troop 373. His project was Colter Pine Trail. Daniel and a team of volunteers cleared a quarter-mile of Colter Pine Trail, rebuilt one switchback with two rock walls, cleared the trail from rocks for better walking. So, thank you. Congratulations. Would you like to...
My Eagle project marks the fourth Troop 373 Eagle project on the Colter Pine Trail. Our troop likes to see things through. We do a lot of trail work. We send a lot of boys to Philmont to go train over there to build trail, so it just seemed right to come back here to our community and give back. So, thank you, Glendora, for giving us the opportunity, and thank you to Mr. Sweeney and Mr. Rowley for helping us to build these trails and beautify Glendora. Thank you.
Also, from Boy Scout Troop 373, Logan Hodgson. Project widening of a 200-yard portion of the Colter Pine Trail by one foot, removing brush on either side of the widened trail by two feet. And from Boy Scout Troop 486, Cade Stephen McGaughes worked at the South Hills Wilderness Area. Cade led his team to clear a grass area on the west side of the South Hills Wilderness Area in order to build an observation bench. The bench is composed of flagstone and cement. All cement flagstone and material was provided by Troop 486, and I know that I saw them up there working hard, and they did a fabulous job, so... So, on behalf of the city council and the entire Glendora community, thank you, gentlemen, to you and the many people that worked with you in accomplishing these projects. We appreciate all that you've done. Job well done. Next tonight, we will be honoring our military, and as much as we say thank you, it never seems enough. Those words pale in comparison to all that our men and women in service contribute day in and day out, those who have paid the ultimate price, and those who continue to give so much so that we could be here and enjoy the freedom, rights, and privileges that we do. Now, at this time, we'd like to ask the representatives from Project Glendora Yellow Ribbon to come forward to recognize Glendora's military, men and women, who have finished their tour
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kath Howard, and I'm honored to serve as the Treasurer and Secretary for Yellow Ribbon. One of the reasons that we're here tonight is to thank you, in addition to our military, because without you and the community and the support of our government officials, Yellow Ribbon would not exist. And some of you might think there's like a fairy godmother of Yellow Ribbons, and she just waves her magic wand, and banners go up and they come down. And you're right. Her name is Kathleen Gonzalez. Lucky to give... But, now Kathleen, you're not going to be mad, because I'm going to give credit where credit is due. Once again, without the support of our city, and many cities don't support their banner programs, I'm not drawing comparisons, but we're very fortunate that we have a city that's enabled us to carry this program on. Ms. Sonia Jones makes phone calls, has our back 100%, so we deeply, deeply appreciate you. Mr. Jeffers, businesses in the community, ACCU constantly supports us at the annual Patriot Week with donations for our banners. And if you'd like to take a look at the back of the room, that beautiful quilt there is another example of how we've been supported by our military families, those who were trying to serve. They served us back. Last time, at the last quarterly, Verly Garcia and Mr. Kerberg have sort of a family, I don't know, just a great project where they make quilts and donate them to Wounded Warriors Program and to the hospitals that have children that have cancer. And she said, "Could I thank you by donating a quilt that you could raffle, and then you could use the proceeds to buy more banners?" Well, of course, we weren't going to say no, but little did we imagine the beauty of the quilt that we were going to receive. In addition to which fact, she made a lap quilt similar to the ones that she makes for the wounded warriors who return from the war. So, we've been raffling this off all through the summer, and we decided that tonight would be a fitting time to do the drawing. So, Eileen Wested, Wested, I'm sorry, she's another one of our newest volunteers. She has no idea for the wild ride she's in. Pam, you want to tell her? I shouldn't warn you, but as in military, if you volunteer, prepare to serve and serve well. So, Eileen's going to do the two tickets for us. The first one that she draws is going to be for the big quilt, and I hope somebody that's here tonight will be the lucky winner of that. And I'll be quiet for a second so she can draw and tell us who the lucky winner is. Don't go get it right now, let it stay for a while. Go ahead, Eileen.
Vet hunters.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, everybody clap, you're happy. I know you wanted to be the one, but I was kind of hoping. Vet Hunters, if you're not familiar with it, is an amazing, amazing organization, because our commitment isn't just to support our troops while they're out there fighting for us, but when they come home, there are needs that they have in education, housing, healthcare, whatever. Vet Hunters is the organization that finds the men and women who have fallen between the cracks, so to speak, and are not being taken care of in the way they need to. So, the goal was that if they won that quilt, they in turn could raffle that off to raise money for their organization. So, yeah? Okay, I'm saying. All right? So, if you pull Vet Hunters again, we're going to have to have an investigation. It'll be Vet Hunters Gate. Try not to. Get somebody here.
It's here.
It is. Oh, my. All right. Round of applause. Is it? Yeah? Vet Hunters again? Vet Hunters again? Well, there you go. Was it meant to be? Do I have to have an investigation? We're okay? All right, thank you so much. All right. Well, Joel Yow and Kevin George Vaughn, you call them, you tell them, they the winners. All right, thank you so much. You'll be seeing a lot more of them in the news and in the media as well, all the good work that they're doing. So, I just want to once again thank the community and the businesses and the military families like Eileen and Pam and her family, all of the people who joined together. It took a village to raise a child while it takes a village to have a Yellow Ribbon program, so without you, the banners don't fly. So, thank you so much. Now, what we're going to do is we've come to the part of the evening that this is really all about, why we do fundraising and why we do what we do, is to thank you, say thank you to these men and these women who have served. The PowerPoint that was created by Kathleen Gonzalez and her son Billy honors the men and women who have come back safely, honors those who have fallen in service to our country, and says thank you to the men who are going to be honored tonight by receiving their retired banners. So, please enjoy this. I know it'll speak to your heart, and thank you again so much for everything.
We don't think about them that much till we send them off to war. That's when we get behind them and show them our support. But we sometimes take for granted that they'll always be around. Each one of them a hero for defending this sacred ground. They keep us safe and they keep us free. They make this country proud. From one American to another, it's time they heard these words out loud. Thank you for the job you do so well. You risk it all in freedom's name and sometimes go through hell. Thank you for the sacrifices made for the ones who never came back home. The highest price was paid. It's about time we show some gratitude. Let me be the first in line to say thank you. I want to thank those men and women inside the Legion Hall tonight, because they were willing to do whatever it took, even laying down their lives on land and sea and up in the air. A tough job, day in and day out. That's what being an American soldier is all about. Thank you for the job you do so well. You risk it all in freedom's name and sometimes go through hell. Thank you for the sacrifices made for the ones who never came back home. The highest price was paid. It's about time to show some gratitude. Let me be the first in line to say thank you. Thank you for the job you do so well. You risk it all in freedom's name and sometimes go through hell. Thank you for the sacrifices made for the ones who never came back home. The highest price was paid. It's about time to show some gratitude. Let me be the first in line to say thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us. My name is Emmy Madrid, and on behalf of Project Glendora Yellow Ribbon, the Banner Committee, at this time, we would like to present banners to our heroes. When I call your name, if you would please grace us with a few words... If you would please grace us with a few words, maybe share a few words of your journey. We've supported you this far, and we want to hear of your return home. First, I'd like to introduce Patrick Cornell, United States Army.
Patrick is in Connecticut, and his parents are lifelong residents of Glendora, and they actually just moved, like, last Wednesday, back to Connecticut. Patrick, we got to see him. He flew out with his buddy, and they drove the furniture back for their parents. So, Patrick is out of the Army right now, but he is full-time reserve and runs a reserve center. He's wonderful, and then, this is a bad time, right after that video. So, Wade, my son, and Patrick joined on the Buddy Program, and so Patrick went off to infantry, Wade ended up going to EOD, but it's their lifelong friends, and it means a lot for me to accept the banner for the Cornells, so thank you very much.
And also his brother, Todd Cornell, United States Army.
I just want to say that there's three Cornell brothers, and the middle brother, he is still in the service, and I think he has three more years, so he gets his 20 years. So, it's just a super military family and very loving family, so we're glad to keep them in our hearts always and call them friends.
Next, I'd like to introduce Matthew J. Haynes, United States Navy. Next, I'd like to introduce Matthew J. Haynes, United States Navy.
Thank you. I don't really have a lot to say. I'm fresh off the boat, back home. I'm thankful to be back here. It was a great time in the Navy, but like I said, I'm thankful to be back home.
Next, I'd like to introduce Joshua Jelenowski, United States Army.
I just want to say thank you and, but most importantly, is don't forget the ones that are still over there and the ones that have given the ultimate sacrifice and the ones that are still paying for it, you know, here back at home, because war is something that we never get to escape from. After doing four tours, there's just so much that you guys don't understand that it does to you and it always changes people. And so I just hope and pray that everyone can just back someone up, the VA or, you know, the... It's awesome to hear that, you know, there's a Veterans Place that's helping out with veterans that are falling through the cracks. And so I just want to truly say thank you and thank you for the committee and Glendora that's making all this happen.
Next, I'd like to introduce Nathan Allen Daniel Neal, United States Navy.
Thank you. Nathan is living in Pennsylvania, so he is not here tonight. So Jeremy, his brother, and I, his mom, are here to accept on Nathan's behalf. I do have a few words and I just want to let you know that for me, this is a very, very special evening. The journey began when Nathan told me he was entering the Navy. Before he left, our Serrano Chapter DAR had a gathering where our fairy godmother, Kathleen, that was mentioned earlier, was selling these darling little singing bears. Betsy took my heart. She sings "God Bless America." And before Nathan actually went away to boot camp, Kathleen came over when we had Nathan's going away party because I thought everybody would want to have a bear. So she came and brought all of the different kinds of bears because PGYR needed the funding to keep the banners up. We had to raise that money. And I was fortunate that Kathleen, Kath, Nancy, Sherry, and Emmy welcomed me to be part of the PGYR board. They came to be my support team. I didn't know anybody else with a son or daughter in the service at that time and they became very, very good friends of mine. PGYR has faced many challenges since I joined in 2007. We've had damaging winds, we've had devastating injuries, and we've had deaths. And what Nancy didn't tell you when she was here accepting those banners is that Wade, her son and Ken who's in the back, Wade is one of the ones that was killed in Afghanistan. And that has been tough for our committee and for our community. But through it all, this community, our beloved Glendora, has come together to support all aspects of the program. And so I thank you. I thank you that you pray for our kids as you drive by their banner and you see it on the road. Thank you that you remember them. I will tell you that we still need volunteers and even though I've been away in Pennsylvania much of the last six months, I know that these gals work their hearts out. And I'm so glad that we have some new volunteers, but we always need volunteers and we always need funding. We especially need some professionals who might like to do some pro bono work with helping file some of the paperwork with the state because there's a lot to do. And our little group of moms, we just don't know everything, so we do need some help with that. And I'm thankful for all of the organizations that are working together to support our military members. And I just have to mention that my other son, Jeremy, has just joined the team, Team Rubicon, which helps veterans as well who are interested in going and deploying to disaster areas. And it helps them and it helps those that have been involved with a disaster, whether it's here in the States or abroad. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We have a little bit of information on Team Rubicon and I'll have it in my hand if anybody is interested in learning more about that or if anybody's interested in making donations. These girls aren't going to stand here and tell you we need money, but I'm telling you, there are people in the community who cannot pay for their military banner and we don't like to turn anybody away. So if you are interested, please do make a donation. And I just want to thank all of our business partners and Mendel, thank you for ACCU being a big part of that, all of the organizations that support us.
Next, I'd like to introduce James Radovich Jr., United States Army.
Mom.
You want to share?
No, my dad's not here.
Okay. Do you want to talk? Do you mind if I pick you up a little bit? All right.
My dad was an infantryman in the United States Army. He served two 12-months deployments in Afghanistan with the 10th Mountain Division. Later, he was stationed with the Old Guard at Arlington National Sanitair. With the Army. We have lived in the New York...
And Virginia.
In Virginia and are moving to California in August. Thank you for honoring my dad with this banner.
How precious is that? Next, I'd like to introduce Justin Taylor Stewart, United States Marine Corps.
This is pretty amazing to be standing up here in front of all of you. Just a quick summary, I'm not originally from California or Glendora. I'm from a small town in Mississippi and I moved out here because I got stationed in the Marine Corps on Camp Pendleton and then I met my lovely wife, Leanna. And due to her and her also family-in-laws, the Elasaldas, they had my name submitted and had my banner flown in Glendora, so it's always nice to be recognized because you don't enter the service for recognition. I served eight years. My first four years, I was originally trained as a mortarman and then I served in a scout sniper platoon as a team leader for three years. I did three tours, one of which was in Afghanistan, and I finished out my career as a mortarman in Japan, leading a section of Marines. So, again, it's an honor. Thank you. And just like a lot of the gentlemen who have served, who came before me, more importantly, take this time to remember the ones who can't be here with us today because those are the
And our last recipient is Nicholas Michael Taylor, United States Army. Thank you and welcome home.
As I said at the beginning, words cannot convey the magnitude of our gratitude and thanks, so let us one more time stand together to say thank you to our men and women. Thank you for your service, welcome home, and we will never forget those who paid the ultimate price. Thank you for joining us here tonight. Congratulations again to all of our recipients. Thank you for making Glendora the pride of the foothills by your many contributions. This concludes our program for tonight. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you and God bless.